We live.
Excellent.
Woo!
All right, um, good evening. I would like to call the Monday, October 10th, uh, 2022 school board meeting to order. Lisa, will you call the role?
Uh, Board Member Weber.
Here.
Lollaberty.
Here.
Aaron.
Here.
Felton.
Here.
Walker.
Here.
Vice Chair Roche.
Here.
At six present, at six o'clock.
All right, will all please rise for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. I was sort of waiting for someone to start it and realized I was needed to do those things tonight, so.
Wait for the cue.
I was just waiting for Linda to kind of start talking by me, so bear with me tonight. Um, as this is the first time kind of running through, uh, but, uh, first up, uh, is approval for our meeting agenda minutes. I will ask for a motion to approve our regular meeting agenda for Monday, October 10th, 2022, as well as the committee of the whole and regular meeting minutes from September 26th, 22. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion cares. All right, uh, we move on to, I think, the most exciting and most fun part of our meetings, uh, which is our quality of action reports. Um, and tonight, I'm excited to welcome, uh, friend from the city, Mayor Francis.
Hello, everybody.
Hello.
I should say, I, Chair, School Board Superintendent, Superintendent. Thank you for having us here. This is, I think, a first for me. I know here at the airport, it's a first, but I think it is a first for me to be in front of you for any kind of business.
Are you nervous, Jim?
Thank you for asking. I am a little bit nervous, uh, to be up here. You know, I was not a strong student in school.
Deep breathe.
Yes. So I do get a little, uh, a little nervous in front of the school board, but I, I digress and, uh, you know, point to the seriousness of the matter in which I'm here today, uh, which is important as a class, a graduate of, uh, South St. Paul and, uh, class of 93. I have personally, as, uh, every year that I've lived in this town, I've supported all of the levies that have come before us, uh, in our city, uh, as a resident. And, uh, it's important to me, it's important to my family, that we support this. It's also important for our city leaders to stand and show support in this, and so we, as a city council, have put a resolution together that I'd like to present to the school board and the people of South St. Paul, uh, in, for their consideration. It's our resolution supporting the South St. Paul Special School District Number Six ballot referendum, and I'll read it for you. There's many whereases, uh, and at the end, we'll make sure it's a, um, you understand that, uh, why we are doing it, but whereas the city of South St. Paul believes the healthy school district is essential to the vitality of a community, and whereas the city of South St. Paul and South St. Paul Special School District Number Six share common boundaries and deep history of community collaboration, and whereas the city believes that Special School District Number Six enhances the lives of our community's young people and instills with them knowledge and values that help shape their lives as engaged thoughtful members of our community and our world, and whereas the city believes that strong schools nurture, sustain a high quality of life and basic community values that will help the city retain and attract residents, businesses, and jobs. Whereas the district current operating levy produces per student voter-approved revenues that are significantly less than the average within Dakota County and the Minneapolis-St. Paul metropolitan area, and whereas a failure to secure increased operating levy dollars will likely necessitate a reduction in services within the district, and whereas the city believes that voting yes to question one and two on the ballot referendum for November 8th, 2022 general election by registered voters in South St. Paul will support the stability of the city and enhance the quality of life in South St. Paul through essential investments in students, educators, and programming in our city. Now, therefore, and in the future, it is to be resolved by the South St. Paul City Council and the cities in full support of the proposed increase to the voter-approved operating levy as proposed in school districts questions one and two found in the state general election ballot on November 8th. This was adopted the third day of October, 2022, with the co- city council approval. So with that, uh, again, just want to personally bring this forward, uh, and as, as the mayor of our city also bring it forward, uh, to, as its importance to you, uh, our, our viewers, um, the voters, and those that are working within our school districts. So I would leave this for you, stand for questions, and let you get on with your meeting.
Mayor Francis, I just want to express incredible support that our friends of the city do support this. I think, um, one of the things that you pointed out in your resolution is also identifying the funding gap where so many of our students in other communities receive more funding than what, um, we're receiving here in our special district, and our kids deserve greatness. Our kids deserve, um, high-quality schools and appreciate you recognizing that, um, appreciate the support behind that. We got signs for you and all the city council members in their yards if you want, um, but I just want to say that, um, I deeply appreciate, um, you expressing that support as well. Um, any comments from the board or Dr. Zambrino?
Same thing, Jimmy. Thank you so much for coming tonight and sharing all this with the council and your support is just truly a gift to the community and to our students and staff.
Yes, thank, thank you for coming tonight and express our thanks to the, uh, rest of the council as well.
We're all in this together.
Amen.
Yeah, and I will just add, it was a great, uh, opportunity and privilege to present to the city council last week, and, uh, for those who tuned in and, and heard their words, uh, very strong support for our schools, and it feels good to be, uh, superintendent in a community like this where, you know, you have such strong support. Mayor Francis, uh, was one of the first people to reach out to me when I was offered the position and talked about the importance of the city and, and district partnership in a community like this, and, um, listening to the council members, um, share their passionate support and then having a unanimous, uh, unanimous vote in support of that resolution was, um, humbling and, and something that I greatly appreciated, and on behalf of the district, we'll say thank you as well.
Good. Thank you.
Well, I mean, one of those things is, you know, we're seeing kind of a gap in funding from the state, so maybe we can solve this ourselves. So that's real Packer pride right there. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Francis. All right, um, we get a two for tonight, um, we get two, uh, reports for quality and action. Next up, we have, um, some of our leaders from South St. Paul Secondary, and welcome, Principal Ochaki, with a couple of friends with you tonight.
Absolutely. I'm going to do something that's really hard for me to do, and that's give up my FaceTime. Uh, actually, uh, Superintendent, uh, Board Chair, Greater School Community, uh, it is my, uh, sheer pleasure to share with you, uh, three outstanding teachers that are going to come and talk about the changes that they've had to make, uh, this year within, um, the curriculum that they are teaching, and it is near and dear to my heart because these teachers, like all of our teachers, are working their tails off, and I've noticed a, a difference in what it is doing for our students. It's really hands-on, uh, and I, I honestly have noticed a difference in what it's done with one student's grades, in which science and math have become the highest grades of this young ninth grader, and that's never been the case before. So it's my pleasure to introduce, uh, Chris Weinfurtner, who is a, a math teacher, teaches advanced algebra and geometry, and science teachers Jane Cornell and Scott Yaudis up to the, to the podium. I'm going to turn over all of my FaceTime to them and let them shine like the stars they are, so.
Hi, Chris Weinfurtner, um, high school math. We spent a long time researching and then COVID happened, so we got our curriculum, um, our training this summer, and the fun part of the training was, it wasn't so much just what we were teaching, but how we were teaching it, and the idea of group work and conceptual learning, which speaks to the way I like to learn. By comparison, most of us learned by drill and practice. My kids went to Prescott High School, seventy-five problems a night of the same thing over and over practicing, not knowing what it means, and now they're hands-on, they're folding paper, they're drawing, they're, um, it's sixty percent, uh, book, and it's, and it's a, a working book, that they actually do the work in groups, and then a forty percent, uh, online curriculum that makes sure that they've got the skills, so we know what they know. It's super active, I'm exhausted at the end of the day, but it's a good exhaustion because the kids are really asking questions, the conversations you hear with the kids talking about things is, um, really wonderful, and I think it'll play, as each year goes by, I think the kids will get stronger and stronger. Uh, the name of it is Carnegie Learning, it has math book and Mathia, and, um, but a lot of our training was actually on the group work part of it and how to facilitate the groups, so.
Exciting.
Nice.
And get a little extra social skills in that process as well at the same time.
Well, and good social skills, you know, I mean, like appropriate classroom conversation.
Which is clearly a need right now, too, so when we're all at home for so long.
And the kids, I think, really enjoy it.
Excellent.
That's great.
Great. It's a win-win, it sounds like.
Yeah.
I think that Scott and I would, uh, kind of ditto what Chris said, just because that's kind of how the science is now, um, so we just kind of going off of what Chris said, science used to be a lot of, right, like rote memorization, take notes, do this worksheet, do this cookie cutter lab, and now we're getting more into like, what's a phenomena? Um, giving them kind of like a big picture. We do a thing like a notice and wonder, the kids have really gotten into that, where we show them a picture or we show them, um, maybe some of you have seen Elfie the Drinky Bird, it drinks out of water, and so we had our students observing that, asking questions, and then we had them design, well, we designed the experiment for them just so that it didn't get too out of, we probably could have spent like two weeks on it, um, so we gave them some things, but that was kind of tying it into what a system was, um, and just kind of giving them that hands-on piece. Scott was able to do something with Twizzlers, um, to help them study density, um, I was out with COVID at that time, so Scott pushed them a little bit more with that, um, and then most recently, we did a balloon investigation to kick off our, um, the Big Bang and like getting into the earth science standards. So Scott's going to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I guess I would say a big thing for, for, um, in science is, um, next-generation science standards, uh, it's a big, big thing we talk about, and, uh, as, as a state, where we're at, Minnesota, adopted the next-generation science standards, but they also had their own twist that they added to it. So in the next-generation science standards, you've got, uh, three focuses, you've got content, but you've also got, um, uh, uh, these things called cross-cutting concepts, things that we're looking at in ninth grade that is tenth and eleventh and twelfth graders, you're going to be exposed to, these, these five big themes, so stressing that when it comes to that little Elfie drinky bird, energy in systems and how energy flows. Uh, the next thing that we, we look at are, um, uh, science and engineering practices. So when, when, when Jane here was talking about giving kids an opportunity to do hands-on explorations, it's being able to look at data initially and say, what, what does this data say to you? And, and, and from that, we've been able to, like, we've seen it, we've talked about it today when we met after school, that the conversations that kids are having is, is they look at these numbers and what they mean in terms of, of the content that we're exploring. I think these were things that we always tried to do as teachers, but maybe part of it's the content, maybe part of it is the education that we got this summer. We, uh, school, uh, paid for Jane and I to go down to Mankato and take a, uh, intensive week training, um, in the new implementation of the standards. Um, that was everything of us being the students and, and, and being treated like we're, we're sort of treating our students right now, not open-ended questions, um, but then also this, this idea that the, the, um, when I said Minnesota has done their own twist on it, looking at, at, at Native Americans and indigenous peoples as, as sort of the first scientists, so what a, what a great area that we live in to be able to talk about, um, beginning of the year, we talked about that, Capoja, um, uh, Indian tribe, so it, it has been a great start to the year.
Excellent.
Nice.
Man, I think just something so valuable about teaching curiosity, because I mean, if we talk about sort of instilling lifelong learners, if you're winning that battle and just teaching them to be curious, that is a tremendous value for all of our kids, so.
I would say that's the primary goal, and I think that the new curriculum encourages us to do that, and I, I, I see students doing it now, the questions they're asking today about galaxies moving away from Earth, and this is what our numbers tell us, and hey, this is what we want.
I love that.
Well, and it, it sounds so awesome that you're taking seemingly like from biology and from chemistry and from things and not, I remember when I was in school, it was very like a separate thing.
Sure.
This was biology and this was chemistry, but being able to show that it's all interconnected and all like, learning this concept about the brain explains this physics thing or, you know, different ideas.
Yeah, that's, that's huge, and, and me is, I didn't realize that till I was in my mid twenties, right, that, that these things are connected, and, um, Minnesota's done a good job of adopting standards, but our school's done a good job of supporting us as we've implemented it.
And maybe that will lead to, um, us acknowledging and accepting that, um, not only are these concepts interconnected, but we as human beings are interconnected.
Yeah, I agree. I think hearing that they're taking learning and making it an iterative process, right, with interaction and dialogue, uh, rather than what a lot of us experience was sit-and-get, we talk about, right?
Right.
Where you, the teacher imparts the knowledge and we're just supposed to sit and listen and absorb it, where they know that the kids have limitless capability, and if we create conditions for them to engage with the content, not only will they learn what we want them to learn, they'll probably teach us some things along the way, I'm sure.
Yeah, and I was just going to say that, same thing, like, if you, uh, the community ever came in and saw the class, these classrooms, the, the math classroom, the science classrooms, it's totally different than what I had when I was in school, uh, but you have kids who are talking about things, and what is amazing about this is the, we have three teachers who've moved from being the expert, the sage on stage, to saying, you know what, we're going to all learn together and moving to the side and, and kind of getting the kids to work together, right? So lifelong skills. I, I don't know a single job where you work by yourself and don't ever talk to anyone else, right? And so it's, it's fun when you pop your head in to a, a science class or a math class and you see kids talking about the topic, right? If you would have told me that, you know, a long time ago, that kids would sit around and talk about, you know, this thing. Elfie, sorry. And write a lab about it, I would have been like, whatever, but they, you know, and in fact, in, in, in the classrooms, even the classrooms look different, Scott has tables, Chris has these groups, right? Because it's all about the, the entire group learning instead of just one individual. So it's, it is, it's been really good, I encourage you guys, if you want to come and check it out, it's really fun. It's not uncommon to have, um, kids walk out of, and I, I know a lot more about Yaudis' class because I stand outside of it during passing time, but to have kids come out and talking about stuff and the balloons and, you know, I mean, it was just, um, the Dobler Effect which is coming at, at some point, so.
Awesome.
Yes, so, thanks for letting us, uh, share the good stuff that's going on at South St. Paul High School.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you for your hard work and dedication, means a lot.
All right. All right, moving on to business at hand. Thank you so much, everyone. We had no public listening session, attendees or submissions to report on this evening, prior to our publicly available, um, board meeting. Um, we have a committee of the whole meeting where we do a lot of the business and the work of being board members. Um, those are also open to the public, if anyone's willing to attend. Nikki Lollaberty, will you give us, uh, just sort of an update? What were we doing for an hour?
Yeah, we, a couple of things. Um, one, we had a representative from Dakota County come and, um, give us an update on the library, um, had floor plans for us, so actual, uh, drawings of what things are going to look like, um, the new library should be up and running by the spring of 2024, hopefully, and, um, it's going to be sixteen thousand square feet, which is bigger than what we have now, so it's, um, it's, it, you know, hopefully it's going to be a good thing for the community. And then we also had an enrollment update by Brady Hoffman, um, based on numbers from October of a year ago, um, but we will in the future, uh, be getting new information based on this fall's October 1st numbers, and, um, it was really interesting information that he shared with us, and, um, I'm assuming there's a place where people can read about this and, you know, is it on the website or?
In the board packet, they would be able to sort of see our enrollment.
Okay, okay. So yeah, it was, uh, very good information, and I look forward to, um, seeing what the new numbers look like. And then we also just had some committee updates from all the subcommittees that we all serve on, so that was our.
There was one other piece of information that was presented as well. Um, Director Brady, um, Assistant Principal and Activities Director, um, brought forth some information about a grant, um, that SSP schools will be applying for, um, to, uh, help families with athletic and activity fees, um, and maybe some additional funding for some affinity groups and to make sure that we can have as many students involved in activities, um, as possible.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Great.
Anything else?
No, I think that was it.
You're good? Okay, good. All right, um, then at this time, I'm going to turn things over to Dr. Zambrino to provide some highlights from around the district.
Great, thank you so much. There's always a ton that we could highlight, so it's always, um, a process to select what we want to cover in, in my report, so. First and foremost, I just, we had the mayor a moment ago talking about our operating levy, so we have our operating levy this fall, we have two questions on the ballot. Uh, first question is asking for a renewal, or I'm sorry, revoking our current operating levy and replacing it with a ten-year operating levy with an additional nine hundred dollars per pupil. Uh, we've talked a bit about in our past meetings, a projected budget shortfall coming our way of almost two-point-seven million dollars, and that would involve us going through some significant staffing reductions with impact programming, class size number things, so that first question, if, uh, question one passes and is renewed at the, uh, nine hundred dollar increase, we'll be able to pretty much take care of all that budget shortfall, uh, but then as I've been, uh, around the district and gathering information since I came in as superintendent, there's been a lot of interest in, in expanding some programming around, uh, performing arts and college and career pathways, um, building out more supports for our students academically to help them bounce back from the impact of the pandemic, as well as, uh, mental health supports like social workers. So, uh, the board put a second question on the ballot that would allow us to not only stabilize ourselves, but look at expanding some of the supports and opportunities for our students, and that would be an additional two-hundred, uh, fifty-dollar increase. So hoping everyone gets out and votes, tons of information on our website, I know it's a lot of complex messaging around it, and so just encourage people, get on the website. Our team has done a fantastic job of putting resources there, uh, but if you still go through that information and, and don't find an answer to question, we have an email address that people can contact and even a phone number that we can take phone calls and, and return messages, so hoping everyone gets the good information and absolutely encourage everyone to get out and vote. Uh, on that same ballot, we have four open seats on our, on our board, and so we had high interest, we had twenty-two residents file for candidacy. Again, our website, great source of information, you can go there and click on the candidates' profiles, and also want to thank our League of Women Voters, they have recorded video forums, so the candidates who participated, you can find information at the League of Women Voters Dakota County website, so that's LWVdakotaCounty.org, so if you want to check out more about those board members. There are a lot of signs in South St. Paul, I've noticed, uh, turns out people engage pretty heavily when there's a, uh, operating and referendum and, uh, the school board and the general election and everything else going on, uh, but we thought, why not mix some pride into the signs that are around town? So we have, uh, with great support from the Educational Foundation, created a new Packer Pride sign, I love the pop of color that, that's on this one with that yellow, but a lot of those are out there, if people are wondering where they can get those, they are available at any of our school sites or the district office. Again, uh, thank the foundation for purchasing those, and if you want one, uh, you can certainly get one for free, uh, but they're also looking, we're asking for a five-dollar donation to the, back to the foundation, so we can continue to support our foundation, great things they do to support scholarships and other things. And then people who are connected on social media would love to see pictures like what we have on the screen here, uh, great group of kids in front of that Packer Pride sign, so please take a picture, share it on social media with that hashtag, uh, hashtag Packer Pride. Early childhood family education, we have an amazing community education team, and what they do is just phenomenal, and so want to highlight some of the work that's going on there. We have, uh, great early childhood family education classes available, and they have started, but there's still room available in the day classes, if you're, uh, registering late, not a problem, and they do two versions, so one is where the parents separate from the kids, kind of get the little bit older students, get their children, get them ready for school, and then when they're real, real little, they have classes where they stay with the parents, so the staff are there to support when the kids are separated from the parents, engaging them in activities and school readiness, you know, collaborative fun play and, and learning to, to work with other students. All that information available at earlylearning.sspps.org. They're also showcasing a couple of fitness classes, so if you're interested in seeing what these classes might be like, you have the opportunity to participate for free. The first one is a Friday night boot camp, so that's on Friday, October 21st, at six, from six to seven, and then they have mat Pilates being offered on Tuesday, October 25th, from six-thirty to seven-thirty, those are at Central Square, so if you're interested in trying those out, please come and do so. And also adult basic ed, so I've had a chance to visit a lot of our adult basic ed classes, inspiring students in those programs, so I'll just give a nod to the students and educators who work with them. Couple new classes being offered this year, so there's a civics and citizenship class, so helping the students, uh, with their language acquisition, acquiring English skills, but also learning what it takes to become a citizen and getting ready for that exam and that interview process to become a U.S. citizen, and what a super cool thing to get to support people in doing. And then they have a career prep course for healthcare industry, so we know there's such a high need, uh, nursing assistance, phlebotomist, all forms of healthcare shortages in, in, in the job market and job place, so, uh, backfilling that, and that again is on our community ed website. Some other highlights around the district, the past three weeks and this week are part of Hispanic Heritage Month, we do have a large Hispanic population here in South St. Paul, about thirty percent of our, our students, and so it's great to be able to take some time to recognize the heritage of, of our families, our students and families, and community, broader community. So across the district, schools have been engaging different activities to celebrate the, the month. Here's a picture of Mrs. Sprague and her student Madison partnering to read a bilingual book, so elevating both the culture and the language in the classroom, so really fun to see that. I was last week at Lincoln Center when they brought in an in-school field trip, it was a STEAM field trip, so science, tech, engineering, arts, and math, if people aren't familiar with the acronym, we do use those a lot in education, but all students, uh, K through five had the opportunity to go rotating through various stations, so, uh, there was ones where they were collaborating to build a tower that had a, a keystone, I think is what you call the last one that holds it all together, they got it all together, and the first thing they got to do is knock it over, so they were like, extra motivated to put it together so they can knock it over, but lots of hands-on learning and, and letting them choose, it's really neat because they didn't assign a certain amount of time, they let the kids, it's an important thing for kids to learn, like, when is my turn up? When is it someone else's turn? And it was neat to see that, that agency that they were creating in the kids with that hands-on learning as well. Recently, we had a community baby shower, so, uh, at, uh, Central Square, it was a free event for parents and expecting parents, a chance to get them connected to community resources, so, uh, nurses and, uh, there was a car seat training, I believe, car seat safety, because that's, uh, something that we find a lot, that people don't know how to install a car seat properly, so lots of useful information that's done annually, so hopefully we have a lot of, uh, future Packers in that mix. Homecoming was, uh, a recent event we had here, a heartbreaking loss, but our kids played the football game amazingly well, it was right down to the wire for those who didn't see it, it was an overtime loss by one point, and our kids just, uh, played so great and the community was so supportive, but really fun during the week to see the school spirit and the pieces that are going on around the, the community, and one of the things I loved working in a younger grade, I was a middle school principal, was when the kids would come into the building and do the rah-rah and, and get the kids excited, so this picture shows our high school, there was student athletes and students involved in activities, got to go to Lincoln and Capoja. in activities, got to go to Lincoln and Capoja, and they had the pep band playing the school song. They signed autographs. I always think that's so fun, the little kids, like, can I sign? So how fun to be that role model for a period of time. And again, the kids showed such heart on the field. So even when you don't win, sometimes you can still make your community super proud. Minnesota State High School League, for anyone who's been paying attention. Last year was a challenging year, some issues around making it an inclusive space for all students and handling acts of unsportsmanship, or worse, with some, trying to handle it with more grace and support for our learners. So they put together a great event called Together We Make a Difference. And they reached out to districts saying, hey, we're looking for student leaders to come in and help us try to shape the experience we want for student athletes. And so we are really excited to see that a number of our student leaders stepped up. They went to North St. Paul and worked to help identify solutions to improve that academic and activity experience because we know that everybody should be included and feel safe and productive in those spaces. So super proud of our kids for engaging in that, and Brady Krieger and our coaches and activity directors for helping us identify our student leaders to participate there. And this board knows, we just had a really fun event with our senior center folks. We had an Oktoberfest celebration. How many brats were, did we cook? It was 80?
A hundred.
Hundred? Hundred bratwursts? And they were flying. So, and I'll tell you, every time I'm with that senior center group, they are just so fun. They're so sharp and witty. So I always just look forward to any event, but that was a special one to get to, have brats and root beer. So, you know, we had the, as close as we could do for the true Oktoberfest. But thanks to our school board, to you all for sponsoring that for our seniors. Great time to connect with them and just have some fun. As always, you can follow us on social media, whatever format you like. We've got them all out there. A couple of, or a few important dates. October 14th, we have no school. That's a staff development day for our, for our teachers. So make sure that families don't send the kids to school because there won't be anybody there. And then the following week is MEA. So that's the Fall Conference, where Minnesota Education Association Conference. So there'll be no school on Thursday and Friday, the 20th and 21st. And then November 7th, we have our Family Connections, kind of the parent-teacher conferences, if some are more familiar with that term, for middle school and high school. And then there's no school on that day for those, for those grade levels as well. And then November 8th, there's no school with the Election Day so that we can have the schools being able to serve the community for elections and not have that overlap. But again, there's, schools will be sharing lots of information about those flex learning opportunities. We met with our principals today, and they're gearing up with their teacher teams to make sure there's still meaningful learning opportunities on those dates. As always, meeting materials available on our website. Anything you need related to the board, past videos, notes, agendas, everything on our website. Thank you for giving me the chance to share some exciting things going on around our amazing school district.
Excellent. Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. Up next, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent items on tonight's agenda, which include financial claims, bills payable, staffing as presented to the board. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no policies on the agenda this evening, so we will move on to our business items. We have two business items for approval this evening. First item for approval is the acceptance of gifts resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Lisa, will you read the resolution?
Be it resolved that the School Board of South St. Paul Public Schools, Special School District Number Six, accept the following donations as indicated in the detailed background listed. $900 designated to Capoja Education Center from the South St. Paul Lions Club, and that the purpose of that is for student planners. $2,000 to Lincoln Center Elementary from the South St. Paul Lions Club, and that is to be used for student planners and science materials. And we also have a $2,000 donation to the South St. Paul Secondary from the Cop Family Foundation for the Random Acts of Kindness Program.
Thank you, Lisa. Board members, any discussion? I would just like to express my gratitude, the amount of community support we have received as a district and continue to receive as a district to support our children is really moving. And, boy, I just have a lot of gratitude around that. So Lisa, do you call the roll? Perfect, I didn't get that wrong.
Board member Weber?
Yes.
Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raj?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Motion passes. All right. Second business item we have this evening is the approval of resolution for Governing Board Supporting Form A Application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. This is the one that we talked about from the community the whole meeting. Do I have an motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Excellent. Dr. Zambrino, do you want to share a little background information?
Yeah, well, this is new opportunities where it hasn't been made available, or at least we haven't participated before. But with Brady Krieger coming on as our new Assistant Principal and Athletics and Activities Director, found this opportunity through the Minnesota State High School League. We think it'll dovetail nicely with the dollars raised from Strive for Packer Pride to maximize opportunities for students to participate in activities and athletics. We would absolutely not want any student to not be able to participate in the activities. And that also could support things like our affinity groups and other activities. So by the board passing this, it would allow us to then submit the grant application. And so we're excited to be able to do that and see what resources come back. We're not entirely sure, as I understand, it's a pot of money, and they'll be looking at the districts that apply, and then doing some things, looking at gender and free and reduced price lunch and a number of variables to kind of bring an equitable distribution of those dollars. So we'll certainly circle back to give a report either way on what happens with this grant.
Thank you, Dr. Zambrino. Board members, any discussion? I just want to emphasize how important our elective activities are. One of the things I have always valued in our district is our size. And that kind of small enough district where this Goldilocks size that allows students to really try all kinds of activities. And I think the things that we do as a district after 2:30, I think are really critical for engaging youth and their success and as students and as citizens in the world. Lisa, will you call the roll?
Board member Lala Bertie?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Felton?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Weber?
Yes.
Vice Chair Raj?
Yes.
That's six yeas.
Motion passes. All right, that is it for our business items this evening. So we move on to the reports and informational items. And why don't we start with Board Member Aaron?
Thank you, John. I have a long list today because I was busy the last couple of weeks. And I'm going to start with homecoming. I went with my grandson Jackson Aaron. And after the game, we met up with Frank Aaron and Will Aaron Jr. And we had three generations of Aaron's showing the maroon colors. And we had a great time. And like Dr. Zambrino said, we lost in overtime on a two-point play. So it was, it was heartbreaking, but it was, our kids never quit, and I give them credit for that. Moving on to the senior bratwurst day at, at Capoja, or at Capoja at Central Square, I was able to hook up with a friend of mine that I haven't seen for a couple of years, Augie. And we had a great visit, and everybody seemed to have a good time. And moving on from there, we went to the, my 60th class reunion. And I want to give a special thanks to Dr. Dave Metzen for pushing our referendum. And shout out to certain people I haven't seen in many, many years, Darlene, Cheryl, Dave, Tom, and Scott. And then we'll move on again to groundbreaking over at the new library. It was nice to hook up with the city officials, some councilmen, as well as Mayor Francis. And I think it's going to be a real boost to the quality of life of both the community and the schools. So I'm really excited about the new library. And I'm glad that we're going in that direction. And I have a couple more. I went to an information meeting at Capoja. Was that on a Monday?
Last Monday.
Yeah.
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
And, and Dr. Zambrino had a very excellent presentation, as well as a good question and answer. And I think everybody left more well-informed. And then I did a first in my life. I went to the Capoja PTA meeting. It's the first meeting I've attended in my entire life. And I want to thank all the members, as well as Mr. Breetoy, for allowing me to sit in and observe the wheels that actually turned the school. So that was, that was a very good first experience. And then, last but not least, on the road again, or bouya, whatever you want to call it. It was, I spent twice as much time as I thought I was going to there. And we even got Dr. Zambrino off of the Never Tasted Bouya list. And, you know, I was going to make up a list of people who have never tasted bouya. And it was quite long, so I scrapped that. So all in all, it was a very busy time. And I want to, last but not least, urge everybody to vote yes and yes on the referendum because, as has been pointed out, it goes 100% to education. It's not going for building improvements or field, football fields. It's going all for education. And I think it's, we owe it to our kids. We have a great school system. We have a special school system. And I want to keep it great and special. And referendum, it will keep us going in the right direction. And I'm done. Thank you.
All right. Inspector Webb?
I mean, that's a hard act to follow, but I will, but I will try. I also want to say thank you to all the seniors who came to Oktoberfest. I had a riot, you know, being able to like hang out with the, hang out with the seniors. And also a thank you to Husnix, who gave us a discount on the brats that we served. So we served all, you know, South St. Paul brats at our, at our Oktoberfest. And it was great to just connect with that part of our community and knowing that this is another good thing the school district can do is sponsor events like that for the seniors in our community because we really do believe in lifelong learners as being lifelong learners for your entire life. So also, early voting is now open. If you're not going to be around on Election Day, or you want to just get it out of the way, you can go to City Hall and you can vote early in person, or there are ways that you can get an absentee ballot. If you want any other information about that, mnvotes.org. We'll take you to the Secretary of State's page, and it's a special page just all about voting. And you can see a copy of the ballot if you want to, and, you know, all the great things. Also, for people who are voting, the school board candidates are on the backside of the ballot. So you fill out the ballot, and you'll flip it over. And then the school board candidates will be on the backside of the ballot. So in case you're looking for them, we do have 22, so they had to fit them on the opposite side of the ballot.
And we've heard question two of the referendum is also on that.
Yes, so question one is on the front, and question two was on the back. So just another great reason to flip the ballot over.
Excellent. Inspector Lala Bertie?
Nothing at this time. Everything's already been said.
Covered a lot?
Don't need to repeat stuff.
That's very true. We've covered a lot here in the comments. But I would just like to emphasize the vote yes, yes, and become knowledgeable of the school board candidates. And all of that information is out on the school website, sspps.org. And encourage you to not only read all that, but make sure you flip the ballot over.
And Inspector Felton?
Yes, I too would just like to add a thank you to, with the on the road again, to all the community members who came and visited us and purchased, or we donated the Packer Pride signs to, to families. We thank you for coming. And also, a huge thank you to all the families that, that took one of the vote yes signs and placed it in their yard. So that was very, very kind. And, and a huge thank you also to Ann Cunahan for arranging that yes campaign for us at, on, on the road again. And also, as you know, I am the representative to the Education Foundation, and I also serve on the Gala Committee. As you know, it is coming up on Wednesday, November 9th, at, at the Country Club, Southview Country Club. And we just learned last week at our, well, at our meeting, that as you know, they have auctions, and they also have silent auction. And one of the things that we're going to have on our auction is two personally autographed pictures from the Olympic gold person, Suni Salih, who was a South St. Paul graduate from our high school. She has donated two pictures, personally autographed from her. And they will be at the auction that night at the gala. We did get to see them, very nice pictures. So we thank you, Suni, for, for donating that. And if anybody would like to attend the gala, you can purchase your tickets at the Education Foundation office on Marie Avenue. They are $55 each per ticket. And that does include partial donation to the foundation, and the other part pays for the buffet dinner that evening at Southview Country Club. I've attended it each year, and the buffet is really good. Wonderful, nice variety of food. It is a very, very fun evening. Lots of auction items, a lot of silent auction items. I do a lot of my Christmas shopping there. So it is, it is a wonderful evening. So if you can, please plan on coming to the Foundation Gala. And also, just a reminder, this Friday evening at, at the high school, Eddinger Field, we have a, a football game. It is our last home game of the season. And it is also our senior night. All of our senior players will be introduced and thanked, and they will get a lot of appreciation from the community for being on our football team. So if you can come to the high school this, this Friday night at 7 o'clock for senior night there. And then also, our district is having a school clothes, clothing drive. And what they are seeking is, is items here, I'll read them off. They're looking, seeking outdoor clothing. If you have any extra things in good condition, they do, they do ask that they be in good shape, wearable. If you have any winter boots, snow pants, extra winter jackets that you could contribute to our school district, to students that may need some items, they would greatly appreciate it. If you have any gently-used shoes even that you could donate for, for elementary students, that would be wonderful. And they are also seeking girls' pants that would fit size 12 and up. And if you have anything that you would be able to donate, they are collecting them at the ECFE office, which is our Early Childhood Family Education office, which is connected to the district office. The official address is 104 Fifth Avenue South. If you have any things that you could donate to the district for their clothing drive, that would be greatly appreciated. So we thank you very much, and have a, have a great day. Enjoy this weather.
Excellent. I would like to close with just returning my gratitude and thanks to the city for their support on our journey through this levy process. That has meant a lot, and that partnership is really important for us going forward. That is all that's on the agenda for this evening. I hereby entertain a motion to adjourn Monday's, October 10th, 2022, school board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? School board meeting is adjourned at 6:49. Thanks so much.